Good evening, it's your honor with tonight's meeting. This is a special meeting of the Tallahassee City Council. And it is a Tuesday, not a Monday due to the holiday, January 22nd, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM. And we'll need a roll call before.
Councilor Long?
Here.
Councilor Combs?
Here.
Councilor Bliss?
Here.
Mayor.
Item number three is our public comment section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. And the cumulative totals of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to municipal citizens and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act. No action or discussion is permitted by the City Council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments at this time? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Stacy Duncan. I own Oaks Village Plaza that is on the corner of Mill Road and Muscogee Avenue across from the Burner. I came to the meeting tonight because I wanted to bring to the Council's attention the disrepair at Mill Road. I think most of us know that, my understanding that that's one of the only roads within the city limits that's not paved. Currently, the road is not being maintained, from what I understand. So for us, owning a shopping center with six tenants, it'd incur some additional costs for us in terms of maintaining our parking lot, maintaining our businesses in terms of the impacts from the dust. And, you know, traffic's not really a concern there, but during different times of the year, the dust becomes a real problem. I know that there are, how would you say, I know that there's some extenuating surgical stances surrounding the road. But I'm here tonight to encourage the Council to basically budget the money and then fully execute that to get Mill Road brought up to city standards in terms of either tripping and sealing it, or paving it, or something of that sort to help us alleviate some of the problems that were incurred from the disrepair of the road. I appreciate your time, thank you. You guys have a nice evening, Mr. Speaker.
If there are any others stepping forward, we'll go to item number four, which is discussion and possible action regarding the 2019 farmers market agreement with the City of Tallahassee. Mr. Carter?
I met with Marla Sager with the farmers market and have also had conversations with the attorney. And does everybody have a copy of that farmers market agreement in their packet? So what they're proposing is they pay $250, and then they also, it's in the verbiage, that they would, at a minimum, donate $7,500 towards free food. The three groups would be, it would go to would be Farm to School, Senior Farmers Market, and the Double Up program. And Ms. Sager's here, do you have any questions of her? Marla, are you confident that you can get that number every year?
I sure am.
Okay.
Now, Marla, is that reimbursed through SNAP program?
Several different ones, they're all different, all of, three of those programs are different. Have my phone up.
Yeah, if you can come to the podium.
Okay, the Farmer's School program in the past has been a grant from the CDC. We are working with Val Dobbins of T-Best to get that back in place. We had four years and we're working on another three years. The Senior Farmers Market is all of our seniors, it's an income-based and age-based application that they can apply for. If they are approved, they get $50 of credit to use only at the farmers market. They cannot use it at Rezers, they cannot use it at Walmart, cannot use it at Convenience Stores, only at the farmers market. The Double Up is the SNAP program that you're asking about. And this is not the actual SNAP program, this is a supplemental on top of the SNAP program where they get an extra $20 per week, or up to $20 per week, depending on how much they spend. And this goes out to our, we predominantly see this as our children and our disabled. That's the biggest aspect of our people that use that program.
So just to clarify, so that I understand, it's kind of like the WIT program back in the day, I'm sure everything's electronic now, but you used to get vouchers and you could go buy your milk and your cereal and your block of cheese. And so basically, they're bringing you these vouchers, these credits to purchase, and then you guys are getting reimbursed for that, right?
Correct. And then we pay our farmers.
And then the money all comes to you as the farmers market, and then you disperse it as they turn in those certificates.
Correct.
So it's just, I understand, it's not actually free food, it's paid for with these other special programs.
It's free to our community?
Right.
It's from the outside coming into our community. And it wouldn't come into this community if it weren't for us.
Right, okay, I understand that, because one of my questions I was going to ask Grant, because I didn't get a chance to look at this most recent revised contract until right before the meeting tonight. It says the $7,500 in free food, and my question to Grant was just legally, how do we document that, what would be best?
What do you mean by document? How do we double check their numbers?
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, if we're going to put it as a contractual obligation in the contract that we're asking them to fulfill that, how do we do our due diligence to verify that that has happened? Just like Councilor Bliss asked a second ago, can you do that? So, Marla's showing us the piece of paper.
This is a spreadsheet that I have to put together. Actually, we're the only farmers market in the state of Oklahoma that does do this. And it shows, and I have to balance with the different programs. So they give me numbers, I have to balance, make sure that we balance. There's been a couple of small errors, but we're doing pretty good.
So, you're saying that you'll delay with this program if the city charges you $33 on Saturday?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay.
We're kind of committed.
Okay.
They say maybe I should be, because I am so.
I mean, I personally, my view has not changed with the farmers market. I mean, I feel like this is a community service. They're providing this service for the community, it's part of what we should roll in as the city. I don't think that, I think that we've now, what is our third year, second year, third year, that we've been able to do it under the pavilion. I think with what they're bringing in, I mean, it's a service, it's a service to the community, and it's a viable option for us to be able to do it and to allow them to use that, and not just think that we can continue to allow them to use it pre-charge.
What percentage of your vendors are from Cherokee County?
All of our vendors are either from Cherokee County or in Pennington County.
Okay, all of them, you guys pay back to Cherokee County?
Well, they all pay sales tax back to Cherokee County.
Yeah, last year, we got $4,165 of my mast right and sales tax revenue just from the farmers market. I mean, I think that's more than pays for the business, so.
Which would not be there without this program. But they're all paying it because they're selling it. I mean, the sales tax is being sold there.
So we're saying that.
And I like the farmers market a lot, I go there a lot. But we have other 501(c)(3)'s that pay a lot more than what this would be paying, and we discount theirs too. People lose money on the cost of.
And just to do like a throwback, if you guys remember back when Angie Jones was the city attorney and we had to modify all the rental rates for the A and C and the other city facilities, one of the reasons why Angie brought that to us to modify was because we had a separate lower rate for nonprofits than her private sector. She said legally, we couldn't do that, we needed to try to treat everybody consistently and fairly.
Right, but if we're going back to where Angie said, the farmers market was a different classification from that. Because they're providing, and I forget the way that it was said, I mean, you said it in the meeting. A municipal purpose that those other 501(c)(3)'s are not providing. They're not, they're very specific in what we can as a municipality do for a discount or do for free versus what we can't. The farmers market meets that qualification, it meets that threshold of what we can do and allow them to have the use of our facilities. Whereas CASA, even at one point Habitat for Humanity wanted us to donate a dumpster, and we couldn't do that because it doesn't meet the threshold that something like the farmers market does.
But if you want to talk about other entities besides the farmers market that also provide healthy foods and vegetables and also accept the special vouchers, I mean, Save-A-Lot, Walmart, and Rezers also.
They don't get the Double Up.
Well, they don't do the Double Up, but they do accept vouchers.
Well, all of those things are pretty relevant, it's just other for-profit things, and they also don't serve a municipal purpose, that's the crux of the language.
Yeah, we're helping to feed at-risk individuals in this community, I mean, I think that's what it boils down to as a municipality. I mean, some of these people may not have the nourishment they needed to get through the day if it wasn't for some of these programs. I'm sure we don't hit them all. So, you know, I think we should help provide that everywhere we can, and if we're being underpaid by CASA, I mean, that, you know, I think we should do that, but I'd really like to just focus on the farmers market here and what they do provide us, and I agree that that threshold, you know, to me is met, and I think the Attorney General, it's met, and, you know, consult your O-MAG book at the house, and there's a section in there on this stuff, so.
The $250 has come up because when we were in the park, we paid $225 a year for the use of the park and the electricity. And our name was used to build the pavilion, and you guys moved us there, booking the park the first year. So, fair is fair.
Mr. Attorney, did you want to chime in on anything?
Analysis as to tax revenues and things like that, you can't look at that at all clearly, because then we'd open it up to where anybody that would turn up a tax product for the city can use a pavilion for free. So you got to discount that analysis. Just know that you are truly opening it up for another like group to come in and ask for the same facility for the same rate, but another date perhaps, or similar situation. But that's your all's call, if you feel that that threshold is met. I mean, I like the farmers market too, I'm not trying to be negative about it at all, but it needs to be something that you find is reasonable, recoup at least for utilities the city is putting out for the proposition.
And I think at the last meeting when Dowar threw out that $1,000 a year figure, that was even showing us the definite discount, because you guys do commit to the full year. And obviously, everyone, no one hates the farmers market, just to be clear. You've seen us all there with our kids and eating and having fun and playing, going to Saturday mornings, so absolutely don't let that be said that we hate the farmers market, because that is not true. But Dowar and I had talked about that $1,000 figure, and we thought that that was still met what Grant is advising us as the city attorney to do, and so.
You didn't throw a $1,000 figure.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put one thing in the city attorney's mouth, but I'm just trying to say that I'm interpreting that as the not zero figure, I think Stephen said zero, correct?
Yes. Now we're dealing on the spectrum. Is a thousand okay, or zero okay? And we got, if we want a thousand, we want zero, is there an acceptable middle ground number to the farmers market?
Would that's for 250? Would you come up a little bit? But $1,000 is more than our bottom line for last year.
Motion to approve the existing contract.
Motion to approve the contract from Councilor Bliss, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
If I could clarify the motion, you're saying the one submitted in the packet that...
Well, the one that was handed out, price of it, mine says replacements, replace supporting documents for item four, and it's the $250.
I just want to clarify, because you said existing, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, we got three of them, so.
There's also a 250. Does it have the 7,500 for food?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important that we have that in there.
I've got one here, so I'm going to get it signed.
You've got a motion and a second, and we have a few more comments, questions, reactions, pitchforks, torches.
I will say, it seems like that's an agreeable, I don't know if it's been worked out, or if it's agreeable, the 250, but it seems like that's okay with you.
Well, we want to support our community, our community supports us, we want to support our community.
But I still think that it's a fundamental, I mean, they are providing the municipal service, and I still will stick by that, and I think that at the end of the day, this is what we should be doing within our community, our working to work with programs that bring these good things in for our residents. I think that's what the farmers market is doing, and while I would like to do the same contract at zero dollars that we've done the last three years, you know, I guess if I have to choose between $1,000 and 250, I'll choose the 250, but I think at the end of the day, this is a service that should have been done.
Well, the city can't continue to give away services, it adds up over time. I just think that, you know, that we need to, there needs to be a little bit more there.
And I would say we're not a shining, you know, light on the hill doing it on our own. I mean, you said there were 30-something farmers markets, and how many of them?
Forty-four.
And how many of them are charged from the municipality?
Sager? Uh, excuse me, Muscogee is one, they're charged a dollar every three or four years.
To use the parking lot pavilions of the civic center, just, you know, which is not that far off from what we have at the pavilion down on Morgan, you know. Tulsa's doing it in the middle of the street, which is municipal, I mean, I think that we're not the shining eye, or the shining city on the hill, that we're the only one that's giving, that is allowing the farmers market to be here doing it for no cost.
But the key on that too is you'd have to look at the analysis to see if all those municipalities are charging to feed other people for that same particular rental space. I don't think that's the case in the majority of those, but I don't have them all front me anywhere.
Marla, what's your start date?
The first Saturday in April.
Yes?
You brought up the, like, the cost of electric, how much does that usually cost?
So normally, we charge $75 a day, and if you did, from April to October, that's 30 Saturdays, and that's $2,250. But on the other hand, when you look at the amount of electricity that farmers market has used, it's $22 from April to October.
How do we derive that number? Were there, nobody else using, I mean, how do we? Nobody was using it, so we pulled actual, that's the total bill, even if somebody went down there and plugged in their phone charger.
That's like a total bill.
Okay, okay.
So it could have been somebody else probably plugged in there too.
April, upper weekend in April?
Yes. Who would like to be able to advertise this year? Last year, we were here.
I think you can do that regardless, they're not going to knock you with the bill in one way or the other. I think last year, we didn't have it settled enough, I told you to just, I will provide it until this body comes to a decision, and we did two weekends, like, is that correct?
One weekend.
One.
So, Grant, can I go back to my question from earlier about how do we document basically the $7,500 income for food? Would the spreadsheet that she held up, is that, would that be sufficient, or?
That's up to you all, you can put a caveat and ask for some spreadsheeting quarterly or whatever you want, I guess.
Financially.
Yeah, that's really up to you all, it doesn't speak to it in the agreement, it just says that that's the obligation, so you can ask for that, I'm sure they comply.
Is that an issue, you can do that?
We can do that.
Now, often do you, I think, that, you have to do that monthly or quarterly, or at the end of the season?
I try to do it monthly. There are some months where it's really, really busy, July and August are usually our busiest months, and so I might be a little bit late on those.
If no agreement is reached, then none. I mean, if there's no adoption of an agreement, then we can still come back, February, March, and you will need to go ahead and plan for being there in April regardless, one way or the other, get settled even if it's not today.
So I've talked to several organizations that would be willing to help you with that $1,000, with grant money and so forth, fundraising.
Send them my way?
I've got a document right here that'll help you.
Okay. Councilor, any other questions or comments? Any from the public? Hearing none, clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
No.
Mayor?
I can buy time, no.
I can come back in a couple weeks and figure it out then.
Councilor, unless you want to take any other action on that item this evening, you've answered a question. I did what I did, revise all the files. All right, not hearing any other desired action. Item number five is a public hearing, this is a discussion related to the Oklahoma Earth Presidential Trails Program 2019 grant application for the purpose of acquiring real property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue. I want to skip reading the legal description, because everybody will sort of know where that is, so. Mr. Johnson, tell us a little bit about what's going on, what you want to get out of this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. This is the epitome of grassroots efforts. If you'll recall, around June, we had a rezoning applicant, Mr. Ward, he worked for this property. And at that time, there was a large number of concerned citizens that are property owners who live in and around the area of his park. I'll show you where it is. It's 21-acre vacant parcel of property at the northwest corner of the intersection of Mission and First Street. The applicant, after that outcry and that first meeting, the discussion-only meeting, essentially pulled his application for rezoning. So, in the meantime, the citizens organized themselves and ended up creating a profit organization, I believe it's the Tallahassee Mission Park Project. And so then they set off looking for money to acquire the property, to ensure that it stays not apartments or duplexes. And so, as they looked, they came across a grant that I've heard of, but I've never applied for. The City of Tallahassee, my knowledge is, never applied for this grant. And so they presented that to me and a couple of councilors, Councilor Hires, Councilor Combs. Is this an option? Would the City of Tallahassee be interested in applying for this, in being a sponsor of this grant? And, you know, I was on board. I viewed grants that I found that you can actually acquire property if you grant. It's a significant amount of money, it's a $300,000 max, and it's an 80/20 match. And so theoretically, we could get grant funds, an amount of $240,000, and match them with 60. And depending on how the appraisal goes, which we have received, I don't have the exact amount, I'm sure somebody in this room can provide you with those. And so, we've talked about it before, the appraised value versus purchase value, and then the donation factor that the property owner can provide to the city, that's kind of been our goal, to cover this 20% match. Last communication I had with the property owner, he was committed to only receiving his cost, what he has in the property, his cost to purchase, any maintenance, property taxes, planning and zoning application, I imagine. And then above that, he's willing to donate to help us fund our match funds. The grant requires a public hearing in order to apply, and I appreciate you guys accommodating and having this meeting tonight, because the grant applications due January 31st. So, you're in a time of crunch on this one. So this is the public hearing, I'm sure there are a lot of people behind me that want to talk more about this project. It's, you know, it's supported by our draft, our grant plan, you know, you're not going to find an undeveloped property that's as significantly developed around a residential. You know, you're going to have a tough time, and so. Do you guys have any questions about?
I have a question, here we go. And so, this is a lot of information you read, but it does look like an exciting grant. I did not see in here, and I may have overlooked it with all the information that we had to read in the last two weeks, how many of these grants do they fund each year, and what's the total amount available to ask for? Because I guess sometimes they...
The total amount within the state of Oklahoma?
Like, the state of Oklahoma, like if they say, okay, well, here's this one, where you can apply for a max of 240, but the most you can get is 240, that's all available for the whole state of Oklahoma.
It's definitely more than that, but it is passed through grant.
Right.
Through the Federal Highway Administration. Gives it to the State Parks and Rec Department. And so, I'm not exactly sure I can get that answer for you, there might be somebody in this room that can answer that question for you. I know if Robin Stand is here, she could help with that.
I know, I cannot speak to how many, how much the overall amount is, I can only speak to that Oklahoma Earth Bike Fellowship has received this for several mountain biking communities across the state of Oklahoma, and Byan has received this grant twice, to build out their Lake Byan and their mountain bike trails.
Okay, and so, but what you're wanting, Clint, is this is just basically to do the land purchase at first in Mission?
Property owners like to speak with you.
Absolutely.
Just from some generalizations here, I did approach to change this to C2, just the stuff that I want to make sure and clarify. We kind of talked about a price on Above &amp; Beyond, I'm not going to sell it, it was no cost, I never said that, I said, what I was going to do is where we were at, we believe had until November to get something together, and I told them what it costs on a monthly basis for taxes and interest on that, and that was added on top of that. Okay, well, I'm just, I want to make, you made a statement of that, so I'm trying to make sure and clarify that. The way a property, and the way we were hoping that this would work, was we would have received an appraisal. It is a very nice piece of property that's in the middle of town, they wanted to do a revitalization, bike trail, things like this, all I had originally applied for, originally coming in to Clint was to do, I did ask him, and so I wanted to donate the retention area down on the bottom side of that, for a park and a three or four acre site. The residents did show opposition, especially the ones that are right, leave this out, that's a group of very nice homes. I had had some agreements with them as far as timeframes, as far as waiting until November of this year, and then some things didn't happen, and we found out about this grant, and they asked me if I'd be willing to put it on hold and do this, and I said, as long as we have some comps that come back correctly. Now, once again, we got these, yesterday, two days ago, we got this the 20th, okay? And, you know, I'm not going to get into nitty-gritty details of the comps, they probably weren't what they were, they compared a piece of property on Park Hill Mountain Top to the piece that's there with a 20-acre amount, and so that's kind of an apple and an orange. But what I would propose to the city, because they need to try to get this done, the grant, I believe is funded in November, but it has to have the application.
I think it's awarded in July and then funded by November.
Okay, awarded in July and funded by November. This would be my understanding of what we talked about, which was 285 in November, correct? Okay, and what I had planned on doing is the comps coming in, something more above that. Basically, there's a price on... Basically, there's a price on the property, 356,250. If you use the comp that they had, which was 285,000, that's 80%. 71,250 would be a gift from the landowner, is how that works. Now, the only issue that we've got is I need to get with, I would like to get with the appraiser, I've already known of comps that are within about a third of a mile of that, that were not used. And so if we get that comp up, that can be accomplished. But I am willing to sign an agreement to wait till November if the city and whoever else comes up with 285,000, that I will do the donation on the other side to get that there. The only issue is, is that I can't get the, because what they can use is they can use my in-kind gift as part of the fundraising mechanism, okay? And so that's just the issue there. If we can't get these comps up, does everybody have the comps, by the way? Okay, we need to make, I just got this by email, so, but there's some subject properties that are on track at 18,000 to 19,000 an acre. On West Allen, on West Street, which is Weston Dean Street, is an 18,000 piece, and this was comped at 14,250, okay? So my proposal as the landowner is what I had originally said when we had a meeting with the small group, 285,000, I still would agree to that, I'll hold the property till November. The only issue with the city council is if we can't get the comps up, that's going to be the worthy issue-wise, and I'll let you all figure that out. I'll be available if anybody has questions.
Dr. Clifford?
Okay. As President of the DMPP, I'm glad to be here before you and speaking to this issue. I'm not as able to rattle off numbers like Mr. Worth, but I want to point out that Mr. Worth has been more than cooperative in giving us the extension of timeline to deal with this, but we're under a crunch to get some sort of thing on paper about some sort of matching funds, and I won't go into the details because I could explain it as well anyway. But the group has raised some money, nowhere near the kind of money we need to raise, but we're, our intention is to continue meeting and raising funds. We're selling dedication items for the property and such, and getting small amounts of money in. We've got some other commitments. We're still entertaining. We haven't talked to many major donors or partners because we didn't know where we were going until we got to this point. And we've got our tax-exempt status with the IRS, we're in place as an organization. So it's taken us this long to get to this point, but we're willing and plan to continue meeting as a group to continue raising money, and our intent is for this money to go toward the matching funds to lessen the commitment of the city toward the project. We've got other representatives from the neighborhood, but we're meeting regularly as a board, discussing options, and I may have said this before, if nothing else, we've got to know our neighbors a lot better. And I'm glad that Clint said that this is a grassroots effort because indeed it is the neighborhood working on the project.
So who's responsible for writing the grant?
We are.
We are? Who's "we"?
City of Talalquah.
Okay. And can we do this in eight business days?
Yes. The grant, it's writ. I mean, we have narrative.
Good morning. Good morning. Can help a little?
Absolutely.
Now, the 60,000 in match, do we have that budgeted?
It's not budgeted, available.
We have it available?
Yeah. We can talk about that in the next item.
Oh, okay.
Do you know if we need to actually get an option from Mr. Worth's company as part of the grant proposal? Because otherwise, it's pretty speculative.
No, they absolutely will, and that's what we're trying to do. If we decide we'll get something done very quick, you'll be drawing...
We can apply to the award, perhaps.
It, just to put it out there all upfront, it's a reimbursement grant. So we're going to buy this property out of our pocket, and then they're going to pay us back. And so...
And really what's happened is today the appraisal, or today or yesterday, the appraisal came in, I don't know.
It was yesterday.
And so we had to, the steps that we're at with the grant, the narrative has been written the best that we can. So there are a few steps that needed to come in. So the appraisal had to come back.
And the narrative has actually been written, or helped, been wrote by the individual that won the Bayan grants, correct?
Yes.
It was very instrumental in the...
We use that as a framework.
Yeah.
And so we kind of got to the point where we can get to, we had, the appraisal had to be done, so the park organization went and got the appraisal, and so the appraisal has come back, and so now we're in that step of, we have to know where the appraisal was so we can know where the in-kind was, and how much the city, how much the difference between cash and in-kind would be. And so what really, the discussion, the next, the next actionable item is the city, in my, I think the city needs to say, yes, we will be the 20%. So we can, we can apply for this grant, and they will provide 80, and we will provide the 20%. Now, if that 20% comes in kind and cash, it can be a mixture of all of that, and that's the detail we can iron out as we kind of move forward, work with the appraiser, if we can get back with the appraiser to get him to up the evaluations, then there might not be any cash from the city. It might be all an in-kind property donation.
Right.
But if we can't get him to up, it might end up being, you know, 40,000 from the in-kind donation, 20,000 cash from the city, minus what the organization can gather and fund. You know, they have some time though, because they, we can put the grant in, and then they can, they have till June, you know, to raise money and to go. So, I mean, there's a lot of moving factors that are happening.
We'll save one more. As far as the option and everything at this point in time, from the city's out, so that we can get this rolling, because if you don't, it's another year before they have the ability to possibly get this. I would even be willing, because I basically stated it in November, I wanted to be able to do that, I would be willing to have a clause that if things didn't work out, and you figure out how to write that, that the city could unobligate themselves from the purchase price of that. That would be all up to where it doesn't put you on the hook, I think, and possibly make it work. It's really, it's in the comps and the comparables, and if the comparables come in, like some other properties sold, I thought Scott back here, I would think he'd say that there might be some higher comparables that are out there, so.
Is there a site plan for the park yet? Because I know this is mainly just the land. This grant would be just for land purchase, but is there a lot of ADA accessibility contingencies in there?
I think there's some very, they're very rough suggestions. So Dana, I think, had some...
Relative work.
Some rendering. But again, that's just all kind of a suggestion.
Yeah.
We buy the land, we get approved to buy the land and have the park and the actual design of the park.
Yeah, the goal is next year, apply again for the actual build-out of the park.
Right.
And, you know, in that timeframe, we should be having community meetings, talking about what goes into this park, what do I ask, getting injury adjustments, what's going to cost, what should we ask? You don't necessarily need to ask for 300,000 and match 60 again. Maybe if the costs come down significantly, they actually develop the park, so. My plan is we pull this off this year, reapply next year for the actual build-out.
Because I didn't see any limitation on how many years you can come back?
I think it's four.
Or was there four, is your limit?
Is there any of that property on the flood line?
Can I?
This park, come up to the audience.
I just want to say, so there's a little bit of clarification. We have four, at this point, four phases that this project would work out, okay? So this first grant would address the purchased property, right? And then phase, what we would consider, I guess, phase two, which maybe can happen some during the first year, it just depends on all of these moving components right now. We could potentially look at a retention pond to address the flooding in the area, would be the first. Then we talked about a one-mile loop of an eight-foot ADA compliant trail that would be paved and accessible to everyone, okay? And then it lends itself in this wooded area to just some very simple, single-track hiking and mountain biking and running trails that could be essentially built by the community, by our Talalquah Trail folks, okay? And then the front of the park, since it's much more meadowy, could lend itself to traditional park activities, potentially, we talked about a dog park, lots of different, but I think that's where the community can come in and say, you know, this is what we're missing. We don't have a sensory park in Talalquah anywhere. Maybe this becomes that, or I'm just throwing it out there, right? It could be a million things. There's been some talk of potentially maybe a pump track where the bike club could train in Talalquah when they're taking the kids out. So it could be a million different things. But essentially, we would build this grant out in four phases to give them some language of what we plan to look, what we plan for this to look like. And the verbiage is written, we are waiting for some final figures from Clint, and he's got to fill in some blanks, but it's essentially ready to go. There is this component of this 20% that we're asking for your support on. And then we've got Tyson Young with Zenith Construction has come on board for some excavating, so we're hoping that he can help with maybe the pond and the retention area, so that wouldn't be a cost. Now, we don't think the grant will honor that as part of the 20%, but it would reduce the cost to the city or the citizens or the DMPP project, right, if we can get those services donated, so. And it does look better. We get points in this grant, right? So Cherokee Nation's on board, we get a point. They're doing the grant writing, so we get that point, right? City's on board, we get another point. More organizations are on board to support it, the landowners on board, then we get points, right? So that's how they scale all of this, and then they decide, and then voila, we get the 21-acre park.
Right.
That's the goal, so.
Do you have any idea where we're at on probability based on our points, based on what they funded in previous grant cycles?
I don't. I wish Robin was here. I have no...
It's high. We have a high point scale, I mean...
I would imagine...
From what I saw, we're hitting the checkmarks, especially given, we had kind of the one, we had the one that was done in Bayan, and so we kind of knew where they were at in their base and the points that they were hitting, and we're hitting, I think we're higher actually scored.
Because we've got their buy-in with the Cherokee Nation tied in, with the city tied in, with the nonprofit tied in, and the landowner potentially tied in, it gives us like the highest point rating that we can get.
And that's what Tyson, you know, because then the business community, while that doesn't go toward the in-kind contribution, it goes toward, you know, the business and wanting to be able to support the grant.
So the thought is, is if we didn't get city council to agree for the 60,000, of course, we will continue to raise money as an organization and to look for outside donors to help offset that, and then, like was said before, if we can get the comps up on the property value, then hopefully Mr. Worth can give us the difference in some property donation, which then even lessens the responsibility on the city for less than 60,000. But we're really looking for that letter to include in the grant that says, we as a community support this idea. Thank you.
Yeah. Clint, was this park reflected in the draft comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Did you have, I couldn't memorize all 230 job pages.
No, I, in your packet, you should have just a section from Parks and Recreation. And then I highlighted the sections that refer to this park. And I have to call it a community neighborhood park, because it's not just a community park, it's a neighborhood park. Community park is Antos Bridge and Phoenix Park. Neighborhood park is usually one to five acres, so.
Yeah, but there's nothing between six and, what, 19?
So that's why it's going to be a neighborhood park.
What is that?
Yeah, I mean, even if we don't get anything from the property owner, we don't get anything from the nonprofit, 60 grand on 21 acres.
Actually, if I could, I'd like to just address one more thing, because there's two moving components to that, is you've got the 300,000, that's what the park is. You know, what I'm asking for the property from the cash position is 285. I'll be donating 71,250. So however that is, really the property valuation needs to get to 356,250, which hopefully we're going to be able to do by amending, that comes out to a little under 17,000 an acre. And there's comps out there, I mean, I've sold property at that number, 0.3 miles away, and a lot of these comps that were on there were 2.08 miles on top of Stick Ross Mountain Road. That's not a comparable comp to this piece of property. So, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody had those numbers. 285 is the property owner, the in-kind yet for me is going to be 71,250. Or if it comps above that, it'll actually be more, which will actually help them do that. So really, the total purchase price is my match, right, is 356,250. Now, that's different than what the grant is, it'll only go up to 300. So I just want to clarify that.
So again, then we've got to look at worst-case scenario, it is the way it is without any donation. You're committing to 60. If we put it on the application, 60,000, the 20% match, we've got to be able to swallow and hope it's going to hold 60. We're going to commit to it, and whatever happens after that, it happens, so. And that's the next item.
So have we moved from five to six? Or...
Not yet. That's why I was getting ready to ask. We need to, is there anybody else that wants to make any other comments regarding this particular topic during this public hearing period? Seeing other hands going up, Mr. Johnson, if you're happy, we can put an end to the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we can move on to the next item, which is number six. That is discussion and possible action to apply for the Oklahoma Recreational Trails Program 2019 grant, including but not limited to, possible action to commit the required 20% matching funds in order to apply the real property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue. And again, the description, the property description follows that I won't go into. That is your item.
Again, like I said, I'm hopeful all that in-kind, match, and donations, and all that works out, but this is where you guys will be voting to commit a 20% match, which would be 60,000. Just to be clear.
So I'll make a motion.
What? To apply for the grant?
To apply for the grant. And to include but not limited to possible action to commit the required 20% matching funds to require the real property located at the northwest corner of the intersection of First Street and Mission Avenue.
We have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Absolutely.
Second from Counselor Combs. Counselor, what we normally do in these kinds of situations is that if it is something that's got an explicit line item, we'll take it out of the operating reserve, or we just kind of presume that that's what you want, and that's probably where this will come from. So Dana, I mean, I'm...
Mayor Surtland, we have that in there.
Mayor Yackles, let me, I put some slides in to help explain that.
Awesome.
So, thanks. Appreciate that. We do have match funds available right now, but technically, those are committed towards another grant, so don't get too excited about that number. There is what we have left from the money that was withdrawn out of that Everett Jones account for property purchases is, I think, we're looking at 368,724.42. That, that number doesn't reflect all the deposits, so that last deposit from December isn't reflected in those numbers. And so that's less the property for the bike trails. That's less the 70 acres of additional property that we purchased. So that's already been spent.
We didn't buy that much. We owned some of that, right?
No, we bought 40 and 30.
And 30, okay. That's the same number we had before, well, minus the 10, because some of it's the count.
Yeah, the 65, that was already ours, and we added 70 to it. And now it's another, another property. And now, another property. And so, yeah, getting back to that, I plan on transferring, reallocating, transferring from property and roadway to the grant match, so we can cover, if you guys vote to commit the $60,000 20% leverage, I'll pay the other this.
That's what you intended to do.
Okay. It's my option.
We may have a different plan. This funding is a different... But again, with the comps, when we work with appraiser and try to get the comps, that could come down, so that match could end up being zero. 20, the 15, 60 would be the absolute most, so that would be just...
If they, if they come back and say $80,000 comp, there's no cost considered.
Well, it sounds like we have to have $300,000 upfront, and then we get reimbursed the 240, right? So we better have $300,000 in the account if we're going to do this thing.
I agree.
Be ready to get it back at some point in time for government, so I'm still shutting down with it, right?
And we have $368,724.42 property in roadway purchase, and that is after purchasing the bike trails property.
And you said this is federal funds that pass to the state, right?
Yep.
Most days, we'd be excited about federal money.
I'm still am. Still can be. I think they already sent the check to the Oklahoma Department of Parks and Recreation.
With the cash.
Yeah, you're right.
We've got a couple options. Counselors, any other questions, Mr. Johnson, any comments on the topic? Any from the public? Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
See, item number seven is discussion, well, congratulations, yeah.
Thank you all.
Item number seven is discussion of possible action to combine the Parks and Recreation departments along with the necessary structure, departments in the garden, in Spade, Potee.
With the councilors, the two significant changes...
Let's get, we'll give everybody a moment to make an exit, if that would be the item that they were here for, before we pop in the next...
The two significant changes, from the last time we had, is one, position will now be, uh, T122, step two, and then there were significant changes that a couple of the councilors wanted to make in reference to the job descriptions, and we plan to make those changes.
Counselors, you sat down with the clerk on a couple of occasions, and we got some feedback late this afternoon, that we might always try to incorporate into some things, but I can't remember how far we got with that, but they were mostly type of draftable, but it's, you are your show.
I will make a motion that we combine the Parks and Recreation departments, and, hold on, make sure I say this correctly, along with the necessary structure of the two departments, and that we accept the job description for the, I'm sorry, accept the modifications to the job description, page 72, for the Parks and Recreation Director, with the modification that it ran like the T122.
Is there a motion from Counselor Long? Second.
I'm sorry, can I ask the question real quick? I'm sorry.
Well, you can, now that I have a second, from Counsel Hires.
Did, did I say that, is that appropriate wording, or is there a way that I have to clean that up? Because I already wrote more than what I wanted to.
I think you covered it. Your initial was to set the pay grade.
Right, because currently, the one that was presented showed a T121, and we wanted to make sure that reflected the T122 for the record.
Okay.
And that, do we also need to, let me just clarify that my motion is, or do I also need to, in that same motion, state that Charles Potee needs to be transferred into that director position?
Yeah, you can definitely, I was going to clarify that.
I will amend my motion. Charles, do you agree to accept that decision?
I agree.
I feel like we're saying vows. I do, I do.
I do.
I will, if the payment counselor hires, I will amend my motion to include that Charles Potee be hired as the director of Parks and Recreation at a T122 step two.
Hired might not be quite the exact word.
I'm sorry. He's hired, or he sold his soul for another 37 years to the city of Talalaw, would that be a correct way? How many years is this now, Charles?
38.
38, okay. I was close. I think you can give us another like 20.
So we've got an amended motion, which Charles, or Potee, did the, is that located? Almost. Yes, okay. Motion in the second, it's kind of a piece of internal business, Mr. Card, do you have anything else?
Good choice.
It's inherent, that was my point earlier, it's inherent in restructuring. Well, that was the one that you changed the pay grade, right? And we can hike, we can do 1,000, I have a technicality here. What, photo of it? Yeah, I mean, make sure we understand it properly, do we have to do that for all the other positions? Is that the question? I mean, I really don't believe we need to do that for Charles, but, I mean...
I think Counselor Long has changed that pay grade from what was presented, that's what she wanted to discuss, but...
And then that, then that would work, we're not doing that to the others, at least is that correct?
Correct. The other ones, you're talking about the temps, so the people that are in the temp position, laborers, they'll be going part of the interview process and interviewing the positions. It'll be opened up to everybody.
On the temps.
On the temps.
Because they're...
They'll be working into the laborer positions, and they'll be interviewing, so...
Because Charles is actually changing positions and changing job...
And that differentiates them, and then the temps are not technically our employees.
It won't affect anybody, because we have no superintendents in the positions, so there's nobody to step down or anything. It's totally restructured, and will not affect anybody except Charles.
All right, so we've got the motion in the second that seems to be agreed to, and we've differentiated between the others in this combination of departments. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Item number eight is discussion, discussion impossible to accept the self-demotion of Johnny Eisen, who can consolidate his department from the T113 to T111. Anything to state?
Um, basically, that's it spelled out, and the agenda.
We're straightforward. Counselor, do you want to approve this self-demotion?
Motion.
We've got a motion, Counselor Combs, and a second from Counselor Long. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item nine is, oh, thank you, please. Item nine is discussion of possible action in regard to approving policies 504, 505, 603 through 605, 705, 802 through 805, and 90902 through 13, Chief King.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Some more riveting reading, correct? You guys probably, I, I'm very excited about these policies, all the updates we've done. One thing about law enforcement is our policies change quite frequently. Every time a court ruling comes down or statute changes, whether state or federal level, it affects the way we do our job. This is something that's exciting for me, because we have people that help us, because honestly, prior to this, it was probably the thing most neglected in the police department, not just with me in office, but for decades and decades, because there are so many policies to look at. I know Counselor Bliss pointed one error in these that I've already actually amended on mine, in policy 505, which is the parking and traffic citation policy. There is a section, 505.4.3, talking about dismissal, and basically, the language you guys have says, "If the patrol captain sees it," then the patrol captain requests from the patrol captain to recommend dismissal. And it should be the patrol captain, may request the chief of police to recommend dismissal, is the language in 505.4.3, which is key. And if anyone else has any other questions about any of them, I'd be happy to field them. Dan, do you have any today?
None at this time.
Okay, awesome.
Sorry, Chief, could you say that one more time? You said 505.4.3, what?
Yes, there, in the paragraph on dismissal, it's the first paragraph in 505.4.3, and fourth line down says, "The patrol captain may request the patrol captain to recommend dismissal," or it should say, "The patrol captain may request the chief of police to recommend dismissal."
Bonus points for Counselor Bliss.
Yes, he did catch that.
Hey, I can prove I read it.
Yes. Also, in regard to these policies, we've actually started, we've issued daily training bulletins, which is part of this web-based system, and so officers are receiving training each day on a policy. Takes about two minutes, but there's a scenario with policy and then a one-question test, so each day, they're reviewing a policy of some kind within the range.
I will happily make a motion to approve this presented with the one minor change that Counselor Bliss suggested. Do I have to say it in my motion?
Yeah. You're stipulating with his correction. Should be good.
No, wasted my yearly mistake, just came right down.
That's how it holds you too, though. Is there a second, Counselor Long, time? Second. Second, Counselor Hires, any other questions or comments? Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks to Councilor.
Item number 10 is discussion and possible action regarding the intersection of Bluff Avenue and Shawnee Street. Counselor Bliss.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it dawned on me the other day that if the side triangles issue, why can't we clear some of the brush there and compromise and open that thing back up, so...
I defer to the engineer. He's the expert in...
There he is, he's been scott.
All right, expert on cutting down trees, let's hear it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let's talk about the triangle wrangle, I believe, that was presented in the newspaper earlier today. I brought some handouts for you guys.
What do you have, Tess? I'd say, you know, when I put the headlines...
All right, if you look at the first sheet that I've handed out, it's our, it's an excerpt from our, it's what we call the green book. It's a designer's, we kind of refer to as our bible for designing streets and highways within the state of Oklahoma and for city streets. And this is an excerpt out of page, section nine, page 30, it's a departure side triangles at a stop condition, which is what we have at Bluff and Shawnee Street. So I've highlighted just the departure side triangle and stop control condition on that first page. If you go to the second page, is a table that shows what that distance is, or what that distance should be for a safe departure from that intersection. And I've highlighted the 25 mile per hour, and that distance is 280 feet. And if you go to the third page, is a Google Earth line that shows the 280-foot line from that intersection, and why that intersection is designed to be a right turn only, because you do not have the side distance that you need. So picture's worth a thousand words.
So you're saying that these little bitty trees and shrubs right here can be taken down? Because when I'm setting that stop sign, I can see that third telephone pole all the way back here through the trees as they are, with the leaves off of them. And there was an article a few weeks ago about city crews going to be clearing off some of the shrub on Bluff Avenue. You know, it wouldn't take an awful lot of chainsaw work or even hedge clippers to cut back and open that side triangle up, right?
That's total after you guys, just whenever the design took place.
Yeah, there were trees in place, right? Okay, I got you there.
And then the last page is a clip from the plans, the striking plans, that show a second use for that pedestrian island as being a block for the crossing, that road that that opening for Shawnee Street is so long, that a pedestrian coming across there from one wheelchair ramp to the other, especially a handicapped person coming across there, the island will double as protection for them, so...
But there's a, there's a lip and a curving, and I don't know if the wheelchair...
The crosswalk doesn't go into the curb, the crosswalk's out on the street, the curb's behind the crosswalk.
Okay, so the pedestrian's not supposed to be on the island.
He's not getting on the island, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's the way that it strikes.
Well, I get that, but I'm, I'm curious if we can cut down a few trees and take this out. I mean, that'll open the side triangle up for what we have here, right? I mean, based on what I'm seeing, at 280 feet?
You may be able to resolve that safety aspect, but it wouldn't provide the protection for pedestrians, is what the fourth page was. Is that what you were just talking about? You wouldn't have that block for the pedestrian.
Right, you wouldn't have any protection, yes, but pedestrian on the wide road.
So answer your question, yes, but I don't know if you want to focus on the other...
So where's, so where's that, that documentation? I mean, I appreciate this, thank you, I mean, I like, I like seeing this.
Those are the, I mean, you're also called on that deal, if you want to trim that down, I mean, I guess you could do that, if that's what you want to do, I'm just, I'm just showing the basic design.
The pedestrian safeties are built into our state statutes, that if there's one crosswalk on the bylaw, you're supposed to stop, right? I mean, so having that, that concrete barrier there that's angled in such a way where you can drive over it fairly easily, I'm not really following the logic behind that being the only reason that we can't remove it. So I make a motion that we trim the trees along Bluff Avenue to open up the side triangle and remove the concrete obstruction device in the intersection of Shawnee Street and Bluff Avenue.
We have a motion from Counselor Bliss, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Counselor Long? Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to point out, in two years, we've never voted to cut down a tree at...
Counselor Weston is in the room.
I am.
Well, they're very small, it's brush.
That is funny, I thought you pointed that out.
This isn't normal, I promise, we don't have ten trees off.
Mr. Johnson?
So, yeah, I do have some comments on this.
Let me, let me, somebody had a question, Miss, Miss Tass again.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what the motion was, what was it?
To cut trees, to improve the side triangle, and then remove the triangle itself.
Yes.
So, if I may, this picture, I'll bring you, point your attention to this picture. This was taken in October 2013, when Dan Burden was in town, who is the world-renowned walkability expert that we were so lucky to have in this town. They conducted a walking audit of our town and submitted us a plan that is filled with low-hanging fruit, mid-range projects, and long-range projects. And this one happens to be a mid-range project, and you can reflect back on how amazing that intersection was before the treatment with the triangle.
We've spent...
We spent on Bluff in order to make continuous sidewalks from First to Downing, $185,000. And so you want to get them to the intersection of Shawnee that we identified as a dangerous intersection for pedestrians, say, to roll the ice, frisky, walk, we don't care.
Yeah, that's exactly what...
So then I'll point out, another thing that I think you may or may not have voted for, I can't recall, we're on the council, it's complete streets ordinance. Can you remember if you go forward...
All right, I do believe I did, yeah.
Voted for it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just read the highlight.
No, I'm familiar with what it says, but I'm also...
Well, it says that you're committed to doing this for everybody, pedestrians, vehicles, all of them, is what it says. And it says, "We shall do that."
We should probably go through all of Bluff Street then and see if it completely fits the complete streets ordinance.
Yeah, we probably should, but to single-handedly take out intersections, then nah, nah, I don't care what the engineer says that we... Nah, I don't care what the engineer says that we hired or anything that any experts gave us, just say, nah, I don't like it because I can't go straight.
Say something about a side triangle, and I just offered a solution to compromise because I've got a lot of people...
A temporary solution for when trees grow right back in the side triangle.
All right, well, thank you for your concern.
Thank you for yours for pedestrians.
Hi, Councilor DeCobain. Councilor Hires?
So my question, I think we're like two steps ahead of where we should be by, with this motion. I think, I mean, because we've heard from the engineer, the reason this was done. So my, my question would be if maybe we can back up and look to see if that's even feasible. You know, how many trees have to get cut? If we can't even cut the trees, you know, do we, can we cut them back, or do we have to completely cut them down? Because I think that, in my mind, that makes me, there's a couple of pauses there. You know, if we can cut trees back to allow this to happen, then I could be for it. If we have to cut a row of trees or two rows of trees to make this happen, then I don't know that I am for that. So, I mean, I think that just to say, let's trim the trees and remove the, the triangle is a little bit too aggressive in one swoop, especially given the fact that the engineer has told us why we have this to begin.
Have you been by the intersection?
Yes, I've been by the intersection.
There's no, there's any trees.
Just to clarify, the motion was just to trim the tree. We're not removing the triangle.
No.
My motion was to trim the trees and remove the triangle.
Oh, but that was the motion.
That was my motion, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
The only other things I've thrown in the middle of it, it's not, it's not here nor there, I don't know if it made a darn bit of difference to you, was the long-range term, right? Long-range beams, as soon as it comes in. That's where we're going to put the lighting. You know, you would demarcate, you know, make it a little bit more obvious, you know, that's one of the plays for it. But from the beginning, that was going to be, you know, where we put all the decorative light pole and get some neat things on the triangle, if it remained for so.
So is there an electrical stub there ready for it? Or like a ready position?
No, there was going to be, and we talked about halfway through or so in the design, it didn't, we didn't stub it up. And so we're going to move to putting a solar light up there.
Okay, so instead of cutting the concrete out?
Yeah.
Solar, solar lights?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the intent. I mean, obviously, if you all make a different decision tonight, then we won't do anything like that. And we would probably even end up having to buy a couple, one from each side, it changed the dynamic on what we had to do in terms of lighting. And then you've probably seen the poles going up further south to go down the, the project.
Before we go any further, Mayor, are you still good on your second?
Um, I apologize. I did misunderstand the motion. I thought we were going to clean the trees to improve the sight line. I misunderstood, and I apologize, Councilor Bliss.
The whole point of clearing the trees is to remove, to increase the sight line to remove the triangle.
Well, I think, because what I understood Mike is he said that, you know, he made his recommendation based on what the actuals were in place at that time. And so then if the sight line were approved, then Mike could reevaluate that again, I assume, correct, and see what his recommendation would be at that time, and then we could determine how many trees have to be...
Well, I amend my motion to remove the trees and then to go for the next step. I mean, I'm...
And then I will happily continue to second that once we're done with the job.
We got the tree cutting going on and not...
Yes, in honor of Councilor Weston, I've got her chair. Ashley's the new chair. We're cutting down trees in your honor. Sorry.
All right.
This is only, only because the ones that want to turn left can't turn left, is why you want to remove the triangle. You can't go straight anymore either on Shawnee Street. So it, so it, I mean, if you live down that neighborhood, if you travel that street for any reason, I mean, school buses, cats' buses, I mean, almost anybody that drives that road has had, has had to change their...
It creates an extra block and a half of travel.
Well, and if you go to the right, not all those streets go all the way through. So, I mean, you can get back in there around Greenwood and not have a good way out. So, I mean, it's for the ease of the user. It's, yeah, a conundrum.
For, for somebody in a car. And I think that was your point, Mr. Johnson, right?
Yeah. It's all about pedestrians.
Which part do you have something that you want to say?
I would like to say, though, if you take that island out, it's going to keep the handicap from having protection from the cars coming and headed eastbound.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if anyone, let me restate that. I've never seen a handicap person traversing Bluff Avenue across Shawnee Street, and I have seen, I don't know how many thousands of vehicles traversing Shawnee.
Well, that may be because they were taking their life in their hands if they tried, and this is at least an attempt.
And I can't speak...
And I'm not taking a side, I'm not just saying that maybe this could resolve that particular obligation.
I can't speak to the proclivities of people in wheelchairs using that, and I just, I...
So we probably need to put a sign up, no handicap allowed on this sidewalk because...
No, that's not what I'm saying.
That'd be probably a civil rights violation, but...
I mean, I don't want to get into...
Yeah, but we do, or the trees. I've got like three, three, go ahead, Councilor Hires.
I just think...
How much would it cost to remove the triangle?
Who knows? But we don't really get caught up in those kinds of questions when it's something that we want. It's, that's just, we just kind of fill those things out there. But I don't know. Probably just some labor on, on our end. The, Mr. Bernard?
I was wondering how much difference that block and a half travel would make to fire trucks.
It's a pretty unlikely route to a fire truck, but...
This is I got to drug in?
Yes.
You're trying to drag yourself into that.
As I've stated many times on blocking streets, it doesn't matter to us, we'll drive over and go wherever we want. That's just part of my idea. But before we start turning things out of the street, spending money to replace it or patch it or whatever, and we're talking about cleaning the, those trees out through there, there is a plan that the mayor's discussed, Ed has discussed, I don't know if the council's aware of it, cleaning Bluff Avenue up, the whole Bluff, the siding Bluff, keeping the hardwoods, the ornamentals, the, the nice trees, the habitat trees, and getting rid of the junk, because there's a lot of junk weed in there, there's a lot of sumac, there's a lot of stuff that needs to go to make that approachable for people to get on. And I think that maybe, once it gets cleaned up the way it should be, the way it used to be back when Charles and I had darker hair, I think that you'll, it may alleviate the site problem.
Is that our administration?
But don't tear it all up and then not clean Bluff, or clean Bluff and then not tear it up, you just, you know, go one way or the other. So that's just, just my recommendation, don't get the cart for the horse.
And I think that's a great recommendation, because I think that's, that's where I am. We think that maybe if we go look at it and trim back some trees, it might clear up this side triangle. Or we think that maybe if we go cut down some trees, it might clear up the side triangle, but we don't know that. And so I think that it's not, it shouldn't be, the council shouldn't have to say, let's do it, the, let's ask the street commissioner to go look at it, or let's ask Charles to have the parks people go look at it, or let's ask somebody to go look at it and get with the engineer and see if it's even feasible. Because I, I think that's the piece that we don't know, and we're not, we haven't found out, is does it, does it even work? Can we cut back trees? Can we? You know, how many trees have to be cut down? Twenty, five, two? And so I think that, that's the, we're like the chief said, we've got the cart for the horse here. And I think, you know, this town, we want to do the complete streets, and we all want to have nice streets and nice roads. And this just seems to be a little bit until it's not convenient for us anymore, then, you know, we don't want to have that nice thing there. We want somebody else to have, you know, move on down the road and worry about them. So I think we need more information before we can move forward with this. That was a nice ramble to say.
So go count trees. That's what you're saying, go count trees.
Tell us if it can even happen, you know? Is it one tree? Is it 10? Can it even happen? I mean, I think the engineer has said that if the triangle is there for a reason, and if there's a workaround, maybe we can work around it and get rid of the triangle. But, you know, just the sightings, by gosh, we're going to cut down some trees, doesn't do that. I think we need to have a plan. We need to have the engineer go out and look. We need to have the city departments go out and look to see what can be of influence.
That's a safety barrier, not only for pedestrians, but for those thousands of cars that are going through that intersection.
Try to be very process-driven. It was put there through a process, through consulting with a couple of experts. And it can be removed by process. I'm not really married to it or in love with it either way. And, but we can follow a process, something a little bit more thorough, rather than...
Right.
Because I was asked to do it and maybe add some more science back into it after we've got a few trees. Where'd you go? Oh, okay, sorry. These poles are great.
Twenty minutes.
Yeah. The, I've said my piece, I'm out. But, yeah, I mean, we can, we can be thorough in removal, too, if that's what it ultimately comes to. If you have a motion and a second, um, we have a very quick time before we try to get this through. Court, give us a roll.
Councilor Combs?
No.
Councilor Hires?
No.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Mayor?
So we're thorough, no.
Motion denied.
Any other desired action on item number 10, Councilor Smith? Here we go to item 11, which is discussion of possible action regarding scheduling of the upcoming evaluation of the city administrator. It was hypo there, but the city administrator. We didn't hire an administrator, administered, so we'll talk about Mr. Carr. Councilor Bliss?
Thank you, Mayor. I was curious, could you get the city attorneys to think on item 12 of our contract?
What specific area you wanted to know about it?
Well, your opinion on...
It's pretty, it's pretty plain language. It says the city council is to conduct the evaluation.
Okay. That's just what I received. Not governing body. City council, right?
Again, just, Mayor, it's plain language there.
Yeah, okay. We're start talking about an evaluation that hasn't taken place yet since the informant entered contract.
Can I say something on that?
The city administrator.
Your call.
So if you look at the minutes for September the 18th, if you go to number six, I have copies of every way wants to look at it.
Yeah, that'd be great. I don't have anything.
Councilor Bliss excused himself from the meeting that we were getting ready to go in the executive session. In the executive session, it was discussion related to potential upcoming performance review of the city administrator. I presented four examples of how to evaluate a city administrator. You choose not to be here, so there was no action taken. So since September, you have not come forward asking for it. So because of that, the mayor said, okay, just because they're not willing to take action, the mayor gave me an evaluation.
Okay. So, so it's all...
So you let it slide from September, now all of a sudden it's a critical thing.
I just, I'm just saying...
It makes me wonder why.
Schedule an upcoming meeting. I mean, I'm not the only counselor on the council, am I? I mean, I sure sometimes do.
No, I mean, I want an evaluation, because, you know, you, the way to improve is by finding out what you're doing wrong. But it is, I asked for it. You purposely left the meeting, and you even said, "I'm leaving because I don't want to be involved in that executive session." You left early, at 7:24. I've got the minutes if you'd like to look at it.
No, I don't. That's what you're saying. It'd be nice to have everybody have a talk. But, you know, either way, we need to do it, right?
So to be clear, too, Mr. Carr, this was in relation to an evaluation up till that time, I believe, the way the minutes are taxed. So this is not, I think Councilor Bliss is asking for evaluations after this date, at least, or that's the concept here.
I'm just saying...
This is particularly the day that you entered into this contract, obviously. It's like an evaluation up till the date of that contract.
But in the contract, it says for a one-year period, which means my evaluation should have been done in August. And that's when the mayor did. Prior to that, he gave me an evaluation.
Yeah, I also, I will agree that by the terms of the contract, the council is late in evaluating you under the terms of the contract, but they are, it's due for sure by the way the contract is written. It's about six months past due, I believe.
Well, I'm just fearful of retaliation because of the things that have happened in the past documented. So I just don't want to be retaliated on because...
Yeah, I get it. I don't play that game. I understand everybody else does, but, yeah. So, thanks. I'm just saying that we, we haven't done one yet through the agreement, and we just got to let...
Do we know what kind of evaluation it's going to be? Because I made presentations, and now one person came to me and said, "We want number one, we want number two, we want number three." I hand, I gave handouts, nobody ever replied.
This is in the council packet. I mean, because I've got two or three evaluation forms myself.
Mr. Carr, Councilor, I'd ask that you just stay on that agenda, just related to scheduling.
Yeah, okay. We'll let schedules fly.
Take your day.
I'd also mention that these, the current executive session is, you have a form, but this is...
Yeah, the particulars, yeah.
You run the council. So with that, you guys can schedule a date.
So, so the way I proceed is that maybe we all have some homework, and then we come back at some point in the executive session and discuss the particulars of said homework, and then perhaps create one, one document. And, and so I guess the question would remain, do we want to, I guess, obviously not wait until the next period, but get caught up? So when's good for everybody else?
So we could tentatively possibly schedule for mid-month, February, like February 18th?
To come back?
Yes.
We don't quite know if we're having that, but it would be a reason to do so, but we, we haven't really called that meeting just yet. We probably wouldn't...
Well, let's say the first regular meeting in March, then.
I personally would prefer that we could do it at mid-month meeting, because the, the first meeting of the month is usually, we end up here till 10 or 11 at night, and...
Then we can take no action this evening, come back on the regular meeting.
Could we tentatively schedule it for February 18th, and then if, if that's our only new item, we would have the option to reschedule that for...
Could we just table, and then, can we do back next meeting, too?
I mean, we can do that, but I pay attention to presidents then, too. I don't know when that is.
Oh, presidents. That's Kessky president.
And that's why it gets problematic, because of the schedule stuff for mid-month, very far out. Things pop up.
Yeah. Does anybody know when president's day is?
My congressman, Nicky.
Okay. Monday, February 18th?
Something, that's what I was just questioning.
So do we tentatively want to schedule it for Tuesday, February 19th? Since we usually always do the meetings much like tonight, on Tuesday when a holiday falls on a Monday, for a regular scheduled meeting?
I'm fine with that. Is this the process you even want to follow? I mean, I suppose you could all come in and individually give him one during the workday out of here. It doesn't have to be here, I suppose.
I won't be here on the 19th.
I'm going to a conference. I think I've seen...
That's why it's going to get old.
Yeah.
But, I mean, obviously...
Yeah, we didn't even talk to, actually, that's true. We talked about not having one because we're going to be missing so many people. That's right. I actually forgot that conversation. I apologize.
I mean, let's back that. So what are we, you're finding a date to...
We've identified that we're delinquent in getting this done, so we're trying to play play catch-up. So pick a date to schedule it to happen.
To schedule evaluation to happen or to find how?
We can discuss within executive session the process that we want to utilize. That would be my recommendation. And I don't want to get too far outside the scope of how the word is written on scheduling.
So you're not talking about doing the evaluation back?
We can discuss in executive session the monitoring tool that we want to give, how we want to compile that.
So we're scheduling a discussion about the process of the evaluation?
Right, so that we can come into a agreement.
Not a lot of that would necessarily fit.
You already have an executive session item tonight to do that if you choose to. You're really looking for a scheduling of Mr. Carr's evaluation because that's just a question.
Well, I'm actually kind of caught up on Stephen's question, which is since it's not truly related to, you know, his actual behavior, it's more like a form you fill out. That's not something that can probably be put into an executive session. The process you use is probably fair game. It doesn't fit under common sense. I mean, it turns, but I can see problems with that because it's not his actual personnel issues. I mean, it's just the form.
Because there's a form in the packet. Are we? Is that the form you used?
I don't know what that came from.
Well, actually, that form was provided to me that that was it was a form that was completed. You know, the only question I have is that we already have a form established that we do evaluate everybody else in the with the city. That's kind of a mid-year, but there's a more comprehensive one, yeah. So we have that. That's what was used on the previous city administrator?
There was no there was no there was none down on the previous administrator.
I believe there was one that was completed in 1999.
1999?
No, it was originally and it wasn't presented for him, but it's only some evaluations.
Right now, we'll give the agenda items just to schedule it. You can always come back later and reschedule it.
That's true. It's actually kind of difficult to talk about the process. It's just actually scheduling the actual eval because it's not talking about the.
So it's sometimes not if we ever make it to executive session, we can discuss the tool, but since the item is just scheduling the upcoming evaluation, we can always schedule it modified at the.
Or put it on put it on a regular meeting date and then and then that way, if we've got 48 items on the agenda or we get caught up in something that we needlessly complicate, I don't know. I don't know really when that happens, but I'm just saying, we can take no action and table until the next mid-month meeting. So if you want to throw it on the February mid-month, I'm sorry, February regular meeting, we can take no action and table until that next meeting, whether it's mid-month or the next regular. And if it's still a problem, then we can table it until that mid-month tomorrow.
I feel bad for the first meeting in March and then having something there, but I'm just one of four, so.
I feel like we're making this very hard.
That that was my my point.
An evaluation needs to happen. I think maybe Ms. Page can send us the form and we can about we can fill out the evaluation and come together and talk about our individual evaluation on March 1st. I mean. If I can add to that, so if those on the contract, my evaluation is a lot more involved than a regular employee. An employee is a one-page, possibly, well, two-page form. Mine's about six pages long and the normal process is the council would each evaluate me in writing. It's submitted to the president of the council.
Mr. Carr, if we could wait for that until item number 17.
But I'm just saying, there we have it.
We don't we don't need to talk about anything, but just the scheduling is all that. There's getting clean on it.
So pick, I mean, seriously, pick a date.
I make a motion that we schedule Mr. Carr's evaluation for an executive session on March the 4th, 2019.
We have that scheduled for March the 4th, 2019. Is there a second Counselor Long's motion?
Second.
Counselor Bliss?
Any final questions, Congress?
So does this suffice as notice to you? I mean, or are we still somebody going to need to turn it in before Wednesday at noon?
I'll do that. I'll make sure.
I'll get them in March 4th. Yeah, I was wondering. I don't know what that is. Yeah, I've got it.
Any other questions? Court, give us a roll.
Counselor Hyers?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Loam?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12, discussion and possible action regarding a surplus auction. Counselor Bliss?
Thank you, Mayor. I was curious when we were having that thing this year, if we were having that thing this year.
We don't always schedule them. We have kind of what you think pile up and I don't know if you had the discussion.
So at the staff meeting, probably four or five staff meetings ago, I did bring it up to the department heads. I said, start putting your list together of all the equipment that we probably should do an auction, see if we have enough to do it, which would include the police with their bicycles and guns or anything they have. So we're tentatively, we're putting a list together, see if we have enough. We had a pretty big one this last time.
Yeah, no, I'm not. Just curious because we budgeted for one, so if we're going to have one this fiscal year.
We anticipated one. We put a little we put some budget for revenue in the right or we put some revenue in the budget because we anticipated the possibility we could have one.
That was based on the last time we had $68,327.34 coming in on that one. And so so I'm assuming you're looking at page seven in the book here as to that $70,000 sitting in there?
Well, we put money in and I've learned to kind of anticipate the this down here and it is basically what are we going to do if we don't realize that revenue if we decide that we don't have.
I see what you're saying.
I was curious when the auction's scheduled to be. I mean, we.
We're still putting a list together and we haven't identified a list until we get the list.
It's not uncommon for us to not have enough to have one. Sometimes over three years we'll have an option, but we may may end up having one. So we went ahead and put it in the budget and if we don't, then it'll end up being I mean, Danny, I mean, the end result is the fund balance carryover will just dip down by 70 down a dollar.
Correct.
We also sell all some other things not related necessarily to not not in a big auction that occasionally we'll surplus something and occasionally it'll find its way somewhere else.
Also, if you look at our total revenue number, it is above 50% or if it's like we.
Overall revenues per sharp. Okay. The we were pretty cautious with things like sales tax this year, weren't we? We kept it flat. We got aggressive last year and didn't quite hit it, so we kept it flat this year. Now we're outperforming our projections.
Correct.
Okay. And that's how sometimes these things ultimately come out in the wash where we were able to build a fund balance like we're we've been able to do for the last few years. And sometimes you don't have an option, sometimes you do. Sometimes you have a position to open longer than you anticipate and you save the salary and benefits. Sometimes you fully staff the whole way through and it didn't work out that way.
Awesome. There are some of the items that we expected to have surplus or to be on the surplus sale or actually share amongst the departments.
So one department decided they didn't need it and another department said, whoa, whoa, don't get rid of that.
And that's make this money on registers.
Yeah, gotcha.
You've got to take all those things into consideration instead of just the line items.
Right. We get hyper-focused on those sometimes in trying to.
But if you live with you working auction, yeah, they are in different departments.
Yeah. Yeah, you move them to another place, they get used there, then you have a by truck.
Okay. I would also mention, just for what it's worth, TPWA is looking at surplusing, putting the other list of surplus to surplus this fiscal year.
Okay.
And if that happens, of course, it doesn't automatically come to the city, but that is potential when they surplus, look to surplus their items, they could come to the city. So if, for instance, they were to surplus a truck to the city, they could potentially replace a truck that the city has. I mean, those are some items that we can look to add to the surplus list as well, just.
They're quite a few moving parts to the.
FYI, how that's on the horizon, it may or may not come to add extra things, aren't we?
We've been wanting to move a little bit to kind of a as-you-go type of auction service too. You can now it's almost like eBay for governments and we have we've never really moved to that. We wait for stuff to pile up and then probably have to lose value in a yard for a year before we get rid of it. And if we can do that online service, it kind of makes it out here much more quickly, probably retain some of its value, probably, I mean, it doesn't come all into one big pile of $70,000, but you might make the $70,000 over the course of 12 months. We need to be good at telephone public works, so they're going to end up moving some lights for us for the South Muscogee project here in the next little bit. There's not much more to move. It'll be their costs, just like the rest of the utilities on that project, but so we'll we'll let them surplus off some old desks and trucks if that's what helps them get it done, so.
Counselor Bliss, did you have any other questions?
Nope. That's it. Thank you.
If we end up with a big pile, we'll let you know when we schedule it and you never I guess can't tell.
Hearing no need for action, we'll go to item 13, which is discussion and possible action on left-turn signs being placed at or around the Muscogee Lane and Bertha Parker bypass. Counselor Bliss?
Thank you, Mayor. The council's expressed, I guess, its will in the past on that. And the last I heard, Mayor, was you said something about ODOT was having in the plans to put some kind of old concrete there to keep traffic from going across. Was that?
Well, no, I probably heard was the meeting where we said that that wasn't going to happen.
Oh, that wasn't going to happen.
I mean, yeah, I believe you were here. But Mr. Wallace.
So I'm curious, you know, what's what's?
Well, you we've kind of passed along word that that ODOT is not particularly thrilled about the prospect of those signs. And so Mr. Wallace, on the agenda, I thought you'd be here tonight to kind of explain why the council's will doesn't carry the weight you may think on ODOT's road. So, Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. The highway, as they go around Talapaw, through Talapaw and through the state, it's it's our highways. It's the city of Talapaw Highway and it's the Department of Transportation highway. And our mission is to try to save efficient transportation system for the goods and services of Oklahoma. So whenever there are changes on the highway, one, they have to be within line of our policies and procedures and our design requirements, but it's also we do seek city input. In particular, you know, we've we've had the discussion, I've discussed with the mayor, the the topic of the no left-turn signs, having those placed there. What our concern is, is that if, from my understanding, it was going to be no left-turn from whether you were eastbound or westbound on US 62 for a certain number of hours. And if I recall, it was going to be sometime in the morning till sometime in the evening. So the the main issue, or I guess just to I'll try not to go too far into this, is one, if you're going to to put up a sign that restricts those left turns that that far during the day, might as well restrict the turns constantly. So if you have the signs, one, it's going to be a huge imposition on your enforcement agency to have to man that and put that there for basically what's all day. That's where the discussion came up with the concrete islands. We can put concrete islands in place to do a number of things at this intersection. It is a dangerous intersection and we could talk about that for quite a while. So essentially, you've got several different movements happening at this intersection and you've got other intersections feeding traffic into it, backing up and different things like that. So you've got left turns from the highway onto, I'll just call it North Mimosa and left turns westbound, walking south. You also have through movements and through movements are people going from one side to the other, which a left turn, we've got to cross two lanes of traffic in front of you to think about being there and making that left turn in the direction. If you're making this through movement, you're actually crossing almost five lanes of traffic because you're crossing two eastbound, two westbound and the median. And that's a lot of things to look at. So what our recommendation was, it was we could actually limit this in several ways. We could, and I want to say limited, I mean permanently, as far as the the concrete barriers that the chief said he can drive right over because we don't build them to where they're impassable to necessarily anybody in emergency. So the first thing we could do is we could make this to where left turns were allowed only and that that through movement was not allowed. And this can be done, again, by concrete islands or different things like that. And that leaves you with a going in or out of Mimosa on either side, what we would call a right-hand turn in or a right-hand turn out. We could as well, the next step up from there would be to place an island that one prohibits that through, that north to south, and we could prohibit till that turns in. So essentially, that would allow people to go one way or another. And at that point, you're you're getting pretty close to almost closing off the entire intersection. Again, it is an issue. We've talked a lot about this intersection and the surrounding intersections. Talapaw has a problem with the streets, or we all do, and it's it's a good problem to happen. You're outgrowing or the highway system. The the traffic just on 62 heading north into Talapaw, as you all know from living here, it's the backups are huge. I was looking this morning or this afternoon and we're averaging 22,000 cars a day from the intersection going to the south, and that's north and south combined on average daily traffic. For a five-way traffic, that is huge. At the same time, when we start going east on 62, I think we're averaging around 15,000 to 60,000. And we seem to increase about 500 cars every year of the annual average daily traffic. So we've got a lot of things happening in there. Now, what we were able to do this year, and I've talked with the mayor, because because of the congestion issues that we're having, is to actually put into ODOT's eight-year construction plan a traffic study. And what that study is to do is to look at all of the intersections. I'm sorry, I'm cheating with the map here on my tablet. So starting with, you know, we have the main intersection there at 62 and 51. And then we have, you know, Rain Street to the south. To the west, we've got Stick Rocks. To the north, you know, we've got the the intersection of Meadow Creek up there by the Lowe's. And then to the east, we have Mimosa and Park Hill. Traffic is not flowing as smoothly as it could be, but in order for us to maximize the most efficient movement of traffic, we have to look at all of those together as a system. And that type of study or to look at and come up with recommendations, like I said, it's honestly to the point where we need to schedule that in our eight-year plan. Because the more congestion that we have as Talapaw continues to grow, you know, if if there's a lot of traffic to try and get downtown, you're not going to get there. And that's not what we want. We want the people who are coming here to visit to be able to move freely as well as the people to you, which is a long-winded answer why we don't want signs. Essentially, the signs, like I said, that they could go up there, but they would be a huge burden on enforcement, and I don't know honestly how beneficial they would be.
Well, so.
We could put permanent permanent structures in place as well, but that's going to hamper movement in one direction.
And I will say that we we brought that option to this body and we knew that that was the more palatable solution to the Department of Transportation and it harkened back to a request that we had made years and years ago, you all I think found in a filing cabinet, getting ready for that asset preservation that you did on on Bertha Parker bypass. And this body took no action on that. And that was, I think, a pretty good expression of their desire not to see that pork chop put in the middle there. Yeah, I mean, you saw what we did for a triangle tonight. Can you imagine what we'd do with like maybe two and a half triangles in the middle of the bypass?
And I don't recall that. I mean, I so so the the item is misleading and it's not worded correctly and I don't, you know, maybe I'm the blame for that. So so my intent with with what we did a few years ago was to do the bare minimum and to leave open the option to do more than that. And last I heard that more than that was going to be done. And so, of course, when the asset preservation's over and Bertha Parker bypass is finished and I see that this hasn't been done, then I think, oh, well, maybe we just, you know, maybe ODOT changed their mind. So it was it was, you know, I was told that that once we expressed our will, you know, ultimately the decision's up to ODOT, what what you do with your highway or not. And I get that. And so what what we had asked was for a right-turn-only sign to be placed from 7 to 7. And, yeah, we're we're going to rely on enforcement to help spread that word, but again, that was the bare minimum, I thought, that we could try to do to acknowledge that there's a situation with that intersection in particular and to have something done in order to save license property.
Right. And I understand that. And again, it goes into that point where I say, you know, does ODOT have the ultimate?
Sure.
That's why I say it's it's a partnership between us because the safest thing to do would be honestly just to block off the intersection. Well, my whole point is if you're going to to block off left turns by a sign for nine-tenths of the day, we might as well just do it permanently and not put any further burden on enforcement.
And then we get back into the logical circle of that's not what we wanted to do.
Because whether it's concrete or whether it's signs and a patrolman, you you are achieving the same goals. One of them just costs the amount of concrete. Well, my whole point is, is if you're going to, to block off left turns by a sign for nine-tenths of the distance, we might as well just do it permanently and not put any further burden on enforcement.
And then we get back into the logical principle of that's not what we wanted to do.
Because whether it's concrete or whether it's signs and a patrolman, you, you are achieving the same goals. One of them just costs the amount of concrete to put something out there.
Do you have data on how many accidents happen at that intersection?
I don't have it with me tonight. I can get that for you.
Has the agenda...
Do you have it, Ray?
Yeah, Chief Hammond, how many of you all respond to here than last year? What are...
Since January of last year till now, counting one we had tonight, we had 14.
So January 14th in a year, or almost 13 nights.
Yeah, a little, yeah, a little over a year.
How's that compared to other intersections?
It's, it's a high-volume accident area.
Yeah, nobody doubts that.
Yeah, I mean, since McDonald's.
Does that mean also...
But also, not that I'm like, of those 14 though, they're not all necessarily because of a left turn. I mean...
Oh, I couldn't attest to that. What caused, I don't...
So we can't make the assumption that 14 accidents happen there and it's all because of a left turn.
It's usually because somebody, somebody else for whatever reason. I couldn't dare you...
The right turn only, it's all the challenging, the whole interception thing.
I have, so I have a question.
Counselor Hires? Yeah, let's...
So we've talked about, with that, we've talked about putting a stoplight there. And I think that we've asked, you know, and there's actually has been some money that has been raised that would pay for some of that. And I think that when the stop sign, the stoplights were changed from South Ridge, one of the things that we, we talked about, I know we talked about, were moving that stoplight that was at South Ridge down to the Mimosa. Is that just an absolute no? Does ODOT, if, if the community is willing to buy help with funding, is that something that ODOT...
And Counselor, can I, can I interject? I, I don't think that that particular discussion was, was on the agenda this evening, just that...
I'll give the answer real fast.
I can cough if you can talk fast, but...
Do you want one of my cards? Give me some time if you have a question.
Yeah, if you could give us all part.
And here's what, I mean, in no way trying to, to not have that discussion. In fact, I think Mr. Wallace can attest to the fact that he and I have spent many, many phone calls and many hours together. We rode around in a truck. We did all kinds of things to try to, he and I and a couple of other people to try to figure from ODOT, to try to figure out what we were going to do, not just from South End of Town, but a couple of other places in bypass. And we've even talked about the city trying to accelerate said eight-year plan with, you know, a carrot on the stick of cash. And we've considered altering some of, you know, our current plans just to try to make sure that we get the South End of Town resolved as quickly as possible because eight years sounds like a long time. And so I tried to kind of hint that we would, in some of the conversations, do what we couldn't accelerate, but it took months. And so we've, we've been through this quite a bit. And right now, we just need to stay, I guess, focused on that one intersection, no left turn signs.
But again, that's misworded agenda item. So, because if you read that, it's saying, okay, we're going to take action on not putting signs up. And it's nothing, so anyhow, it may have been my bad.
I'll tell you, just in general, Taalakla, whether it's here at 62 or all the way down to the highway 82 junction, the congestion is a concern because we need free-flowing traffic for this town to continue growing. It seems that everybody either lives or works on the south side and then needs to go to the east side of town. We've got lots of highways on the west side that don't want to start developing that way.
And developing that way? It seems to me that they can just talk to each other. They don't...
And that's, that's the point.
From Park Hill to Walmart to Rain Street, we knew that that's what that name was. Rainy Rain. It seems to me that they don't talk to each other.
They don't. Whenever you have, and this is kind of going a little bit further than, whenever you have groups of intersections in an area, they can be connected to each other. These signals are gone. So they just fire off as the traffic...
They have been and they broke and it's not there, but...
That makes so much sense.
That's true.
That makes a lot of sense because I see for many times that...
Well, I, I need to, Mr. Ward, very quickly, you mentioned free-flowing, are you talking about roundabouts? You said free-flowing through the city.
Who knows?
Okay.
Roundabouts have pluses and minuses to them. That's why we're looking to do an engineering study. And when we do the study, it will involve the, the city involvement because we've got to find out what's going to work the best. If we were to start just slapping roundabouts in on here, it may help things move up without truly studying it and what the needs are for traffic in the town, it's hard to say. As well as currently, there are zero roundabouts on the state highway system in Oklahoma. There are plans for putting some in in different locations, but to just start stamping them out here at all these intersections, I don't know that that's...
Hey, when I heard the mention free-flowing, usually it leads to roundabouts.
That conversation came.
And so just to clarify, when you said in the eight-year study, you're saying anytime, sometime in the next eight years, it's going to happen?
I'm saying the way, again, trying not to draw this out, ODOT works off of an eight-year construction plan. So every year we move forward, we add new projects to it. Right now, we have a construction project in 2026. Now, what that will enable us to do is actually well before that, and hopefully very soon, we'll be able to initiate that study, we'll bring an engineering firm on board and we'll start making plans. So that way, by the time we get to 2026, or possibly before, we can put that into action to try and get this going. Because this town, we can't wait till 2026 or this time, we have to start rebuilding.
Right, because we've got a complicated plan and I believe this includes some of the back.
You could put one in, shawty and just blow up.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on. Yeah, let's shawty and go, go there. Mr. Wallace and I have been in pretty consistent contact, talking about all these issues. And we are going to try to accelerate that plan, I think, because it was something that we mutually, it's not something that we're geniuses about. We all recognize that it, it needs to happen soon and we have been working our way through that. And at some point, if we ever got anything a little bit more solid, then we obviously back to Mr. Wallace, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any other question on Mr. Wallace? I just...
I'm going to apologize that you had to sit here and subject yourself to this. At least we get paid to hang out here. Thank you for the comment and thank you for driving me to town.
It's, it's no problem. I actually live just kind of on the east side of Fort Goodson, so it's not a huge deal.
Well, I don't feel so sorry for you.
Except that he had to drive through those intersections.
And again, I was here already this evening and I brought my son with me. He was a, he, my kids go to Tycoon though, here, so we were...
Into the Ramos?
Yes.
Where, where have you all been? Jim was back in there and I seen you, so.
We, we were there.
I was, I was a little busy. Okay. It's good, we'll catch up with you there soon. Any other question, Mr. Wallace? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll catch up with you. It's a dojo. All right. Stop, or you want to say something?
I would.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Yes, yes, sir. I'll get ready to talk us along.
I agree with everything that Mr. Wallace said. My concern to even consider restricting the traffic in that intersection, and by the way, I, I think I saw the numbers, it's one of the top X most dangerous intersections in northeastern Oklahoma. And with our growth, which is, is a good problem, but it's just going to create more stress, more wrecks, more injuries coming. I, I'd like to think if that traffic is restricted, we're running you up back to other stressful areas and add, add to the, add to the other. I'm here to propose a request or suggest that that traffic study be accelerated. We have been able to raise funds from the private sector to help pay for that, that traffic study, which really needs to be done now. And in turn, perhaps in my view, an item that you all would consider on future agenda or something, again, I have a private, there's private businesses that will just pay if necessary on some funding or whatever to go ahead and accelerate because that intersection is not going to get approved out. As a footnote too, and I know that the traffic signal is, is kind of a topic with our friends at ODOT, et cetera, but I know as a, as a testimonial of South Ridge Road, I've come on to those 22,000 cars a day, that's the traffic light absolutely fixed. The congestion, the traffic flows better, et cetera, and I think, would hope that maybe we could take a relook at that with the traffic studies, seeing if you're wasting your time or let's take a relook and perhaps redo. So we've, we've been able to raise for the non-traffic signal to date for commitments of $130,000. But I'm concerned, eight years from now is going to kind of go away, so there's kind of a, while everybody's willing to go. So we'd like to propose a traffic study. If I need to assist to raise private funds for that study under the city's umbrella, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you, sir. And we've had that conversation with Mr. Wallace here and there. We've even talked about, you know, shoving some resources from projects down the...
Yeah, we'll make something work one way or the other as quickly as we possibly can.
Councilors, any other comments or questions?
Do we have a ballpark idea of what a traffic study might cost?
Didn't we discuss that? We do, we don't really know, do we, Mr. Wallace? I mean, it was one of those a lot kind of gestures.
Okay, so, just put in a single traffic signal?
That's true. Yeah, hey, you know what?
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, go back to the question.
Sorry. Yeah, we'll, that's a topic for another time.
We'll email you. Thank you for the card.
We'll move on to the next item, which is our executive session. Is there a motion to move to executive session? We have a motion from Counselor Combs. I think the, Lord's name in vain there, or whatever that was. Okay, well, okay, a second from Counselor Combs, or Hocken. Carter's roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We'll bring you back soon. Hey, we've got everybody. We'll zoom this meeting and go back into regular session. Item number 16, which is discussion and possible action related to the purchase or appraisal of real property at or around the following location, 609 Gwynne Avenue, 16 Gwynne Avenue, all of Taalakla, Oklahoma. Is there any action desired by the council this evening? Hearing none will move to item 17, which is a discussion and possible action related to the city administrator's evaluation. Is there any desire to action by the council this evening?